Hello, everybody. Happy Friday. And for those on, have you been to the first session where I talked about test taking in general, test taking techniques, things like that? Because if you haven't, then we will cover that for the first few minutes here. Either come up or put it in the chat.
I wasn't at that one, but I think I have been to it before, or I believe you and I had a private session with that one in the past.
Yeah, Stephanie, yeah. Okay. Well, let's let's get into some more of these questions then here. Let me ask, have, would you, people on, would you rather go through some small animal questions, or would you rather do a neuroanatomic review? Where I kind of go through basically neuroanatomy and then localization of lesions, because almost every neuro question, it involves that aspect of it. Would you all rather have questions or neuro neuroanatomic review?
I'm fine with either or. I've done the neuro one before, but I can always use a neuro review.
Oh, you've done the neuro one before? Okay. Well, let's do a little bit of that one then. Okay. Make sure these videos are working. Narrow videos up. All right. It started here in one sec. Okay, so regarding neuro in general and neural questions. Kind of like when you read a question about a large animal or possibly a food animal, are they asking about a particular patient, or they asking about a herd? Are they asking about an individual or herd with with neuro? Basically break it down into is this central nervous system or peripheral? Right? So central is going to be the brain and spinal cord and peripheral are going to be the spinal tracts, the nerve roots, the peripheral nerves, nerve motor end plate for for what it involves. So again, with the central nervous system, it's important because sometimes they will ask you based on neuro exam findings, right? They will say, you know, the patient presents seizures, right? We know seizures come from the cerebral cortex. But if they also list some cranial nerve deficits, you may be, and they may say, you know, what part of the brain is mostly, you know, where is the seizure fusce most likely? Based on the neurologic exam, right? So we have the cerebral cortex. So that's higher centers, fine motor function, auditory, things like that, diencephalon. So cranium nerves one and two, right? So ophthalmic right for two, olfactory for one, mesmet and myencephalon, right? So this is the brain stem. So the mesencephalon is going to have cranial nerves three and four along with the RAS, which is the reticular activating center, which is part of consciousness. So if you have a patient who is very dull or not responsive to auditory or visual stimuli or even noxious stimuli, the mesencephalon is the area that that houses that. The metencephalon ponds and the cerebellum, right? So in green, so that's going to be cranial nerve five, right? So trigeminal. And then the myencephalon, which is the medulla oblongata, or what the general public thinks of as the brain stem, that's all the other cranial nerves, right? So six through 12. This other image here is the spinal cord, because that's how we kind of break it up, right? We have cervical, cervical intumescence, thoraco-lumbar, pelvic intumescence, and then the sacral coccygeal. So where these plexus are, right? So the cervical and the pelvic plexus, that's where we have the main nerve roots for the fore and hind limbs coming off of. And again, that helps us localize lesions, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But it's important to know, right, that the axillary, the nerves coming in, you know, into the axillary region. So the brachial nerve and the radial nerve come from this initial cervical intumescence, and then pelvic nerve, or the or the pelvic area L4 to S1, that's where we have the femoral and the sciatic and the pudendal and the pelvic nerves coming off of. So again, if you have a patient who is having trouble walking, and they say, not only is he having trouble walking with the back legs, but we also have issues with the anal reflex, or maybe we have, you know, very poor patellar reflexes. Then you can kind of localize the lesion. Well, it's not just the racco, you know, it's not just, you know, somewhere behind the front legs along here, I can localize it here because it's taking out nerve roots. When we do a neurologic exam, what we're going to cover are five main things. So number one is going to be level of consciousness, followed by cranial nerves, followed by peripheral reflexes. And then we're going to look at things like gait and then proprioception. So the first thing we're going to assess is level of consciousness, and there's basically five levels of that, right? Alert being normal, dull, obtunded, stupor, and coma. So coma, it's pretty easy to define. That is a patient who is not responsive even to noxious stimuli. Stupor are patients only responsive to noxious stimuli. So alert, stupor, and coma, everybody can pretty much agree on. Dull and obtunded, that's somewhat subjective, right? So dull, I would consider, you know, your patient getting betorphenol is dull. And obtunded would be a patient who got, you know, hydro and some propofol, right? So it's just the the level of their responsiveness and being aware of their surroundings is is progressively getting worse with these descriptors. So hopefully you guys remember your cranial nerves, 12 of them, there's all kinds of, you know, little sayings, some appropriate, some inappropriate for remembering the nerve names and what they do. So you should be familiar with certain cranial nerve reflexes, right? So like the menace reflex checks for vision and also the conscious acknowledgement of sight, right? Cupillary reactivity only looks at the retina. You have to have some kind of reaction from the patient, so they blink their eye, they back their head up. They respond to a threat to acknowledge that they have vision, which is being sent to the brain and interpreted by the brain in a correct manner. So you need to know the reflex and the cranial nerves that are part of it, right? So for menace, it's cranial two and seven, along with the visual tracks and the occipital lobe, right? So two is the sensory. Seven is going to be the blink, right? So that's going to be your your facial nerve running your facial muscles and oculars, oculi, and et cetera, et cetera, to blink your eye. Doll's eye reflex, okay, that's vestibular ocular reflex. So not too many people play with dolls anymore. But there was a feature that some of the fancier dolls had, which is when you move their head, their eyes tracked with their head moving. That is a normal reflex. So that involves the muscle, the ocular muscles. As the output and the input is going to be the vestibular nerve, because you're basically changing where the head is in space. So that's going to be cranial nerve eight for the afferent, and then for the efferent, or the actual motion of the eye, that's going to be, you know, your your cranial nerves three, four, and six, right? So your ocular muscles, abducens, lateral rectus, and so on. Palpebral reflex. So that's going to be cranial, that's going to be trigeminal and seven, right? So that's going to be when you kind of tap the medial canthus and see if they blink. Strabismus, which is abnormal basically resting placement of the orbit. So you can have lateral or medial strabismus, which can which can either be a problem with the muscle or a problem with the nerve to the muscle, right? So that involves your your cranial nerve three, four, and six, similar to your vestibular ocular reflex. Remember SO4 LR6, so superior bleak is cranial nerve four, lateral rectus is six. Okay, just a little demonstration of the doll's eye reflex. So again, we have motion. Well, the eyes are going to be kind of turning with the head. And so the output is going to be the ocular motor and the abducens nerve. And the input is from the vestibular nucleus and the vestibular nerve. Nice stagmus, right? So again, it is normal for the eyes to track in the, you know, the way basically the the head is being turned, whether it's, you know, being extended or flexed or turned left or right. If a patient has resting nice stagmus, right, that is not normal. So spontaneous nice stagmus, kind of like the doll's eye. So that's basically, so sorry, I misspoke. Inducible nice stagmus is normal, spontaneous, where the head is just, you know, standing in one plane, yet we have either horizontal rotary or vertical nice stagmus, right? So abnormal eye movement. That is a problem with the vestibular nerve or the vestibular nucleus. Vertical nice stagmus, so up and down nice stagmus is almost always a more central lesion than a peripheral lesion. Most horizontal and the majority of rotary nice stagmus are peripheral vestibular problems, right? So inner or middle ear, something like that going on. Position cranial nerve eight again, right? So vestibular. And then gag swallowing is going to be nine and 10, and then 12 is going to be symmetry of the tongue. Okay, so again, here are all the cranial nerves, what they do and the test for them. So you should know this stuff. I'm not going to spend a ton of time on the spinal tracts. But basically, what you need to remember, we have sensory pathways in the spinal cord and then the dorsal roots and some in cranial nerve ganglia. There are superficial and deep pain pathways. So the superficial pathways are usually on the periphery of the cord and more of the deeper pain tracks are going to be, you know, more centralized. So that is why it is so important when you have a patient who has a problem with limb use, right? If they have a parisis or paralysis, to check and see, do they have deep pain present? It gives you an idea of the severity of the injury to the cord. Okay. Superficial pain pathways, one thing to remember, they're going to be dorsolateral cord, and they project to the contralateral core part of the cortex, right? Things cross either in the cord or in the ponds. Okay, so here we have a peripheral stimulus, we have, you know, sensory pathways that go into the dorsal horn here of the cord, they interact with an interneuron, which modulates that sense. Right? And so what do I mean by that? That's that's where we get refractoryness from. So if you just continue to tap your nose, you know, after a while, it's going to dull. It's not going to, that that tapping is not going to feel as prominent. That is from the interneurons becoming refractory and not sending as much of that information up the cord. So they will use terminology on the exam, and part of it is also to, you know, test to see if you if you know the term, along with also trying to find the lesion, right? So anesthesia, loss of pain sensation, hyposthesia, partial loss, hyperesthesia, increased pain sensation, hyperreflexia and areflexia, right? So diminished or loss of reflexes. And then, as I mentioned, loss of deep pain. Again, this data continues to change. There was previous data showing that patients who had lost deep pain, if you can address that issue, if there's something you can decompress within 12 hours, they have a 50% return to function, that is actually much higher now. But time is of the essence, so it's usually within 12 to 24 hours, within loss of deep pain. If there's something we can fix, we have to get in there and fix it if the patient is going to regain function. All right, so starting with the cerebrum. So the higher centers of the brain, right? If we have disease there, we are going to see alterations in level of consciousness and behavior. So depression stupor, one of those things. They may have central blindness, where they have reactive pupils, but they can't see. They will have contralateral proprioceptive defects, right? So if they have a right sided frontal brain tumor, let's say, in the frontal cortex, it's going to be the left side of the body that's not going to be working well. They may also develop what we call corticolis, where they head turn or twist their whole body toward the side of the lesion. They may head press, and they may circle, and usually if they circle, it's toward the lesion. Hey, what if there's a lesion of the diencephalon, right? That's where the hypothalamus lives. So we're going to see issues with thirst and hunger and problems with sleep-wake cycle. Body temperature regulation may be off. And again, they will have other symptoms of consciousness, issues, right? So act disoriented, not recognize their name anymore. Depression stupor, et cetera, et cetera. Hey, the thalamus, okay, so we're going to see ataxia, visual deficits. Lesions of the thalamus typically will cause aversion syndrome, where they curl into a ball, again, toward the side of the lesion and alterations in level of consciousness. Okay. Let me show some videos here. Sorry, I'm having trouble getting this video to play. I'm not sure why. Hello, I apologize, you guys. I don't think my videos are going to be working, which is really upsetting, because I had them working yesterday. Let me just try one more thing here. Yeah, it must be a, I must have to update a video driver or something. This is so, whoop. Now something's working. All right, if that one works, can I get this one to work? Well, we're gonna have to just skip these and move on. Sorry, you guys. Okay. Brainstem lesions. So these are the midbrain ponds and the medulla, so cranial nerves three through 12. So with lesions affecting the brain stem, right? So this is the brain stem is kind of the more reserved part of the brain, right? It's more ancient, so to speak. Lesions there are considered, you know, more serious. So we can have varying degrees of weakness, tetraplegia or tetraparesis. Depending on where the lesion is in the brain stem, it depends, it may be affecting the same side as the lesion or cross, right? So ipsilateral or contralateral. Remember, all of the fibers cross in the ponds. So if you have the lesion of the medulla, let me just go back here. Right? So the ponds is back here. If you have a lesion caudal to that, the affected muscles, limbs, et cetera, are going to be ipsilateral on the same side. Lesions above the level of the ponds are going to cross. So if you have a lesion on the left side of the mesencephalon, you're going to have problems with the right side. Okay, so it's important to know where we are, where things cross. The vasomotor center is located in the medulla oblongata, right? So your volume receptors, your the aortic arch, the aortic bodies, pressure receptors are sending negative input to the vasomotor center, right? So when you have normal blood flow and normal blood pressure, there are inhibitory signals constantly getting sent to the vasomotor center saying everything is good, don't do anything. When you have a loss of volume, which is measured by chloride levels, or a drop in blood pressure, those carotid bodies and aortic arch volume and pressure sensors stop sending the inhibitory signals and the autonomic nervous system then takes over, right? So you have release of norepinephrine, epinephrine, renin, et cetera, et cetera, to increase cardiac output, increase heart rate, increase respiratory rate, increase tidal volume, all those things. So a lesion in that area is going to disrupt your autonomic nervous system, and those patients may have bradycardia. They may have what we call Cozma's respiration, where they have an abnormal pattern of breathing. And then finally, we're going to see affected mentation, right? One of those, one of those descriptors. So I'll, Dr. Soto has this talk, she'll share it with all of you. But, you know, just, you know, make sure you review where your cranial nerves originate from above the frame and magnum, right? In the, in the, you know, from the brain itself. So you can localize lesions when it comes time. Okay, vestibular system, we have a peripheral and central, peripheral is going to be the inner ear, right? We have the labyrinth and the membranous portion of the vestibular cochlear nerve. And then we have central nuclei in the caudal brain stem. Whose function is to keep us balanced, right? Provide extensor tone to ipsilateral, contralateral limbs and flexion, right? Basically keep you balanced. So when there are lesions affecting the vestibular system, they're almost always unilateral. So we're going to have asymmetric signs, right? So we're going to have a tilt of the head toward one side. We may have, again, nice stagmus toward one direction versus another direction. Tilt is usually toward the side of the lesion when it is peripheral. When it is central, it can be either central vestibular nuclei inflammation or tumors or what have you usually cause head swaying, where they sway their head back and forth. There's a famous singer from the 70s, still around today, Stevie Wonder. If you watch Stevie Wonder sing when he throws his head side to side, that is what we see sometimes with vestibular disorders in our patients. Ataxia, ataxia is, you know, the medical term for unbalanced. So what do we see with ataxia? A wide-based stance, falling, rolling, or leaning toward one direction or another. How do you figure out if the problem with the vestibular system is in the ear? Or is it in the brain, right? Because that's a big deal. I would much rather have a peripheral vestibular issue than a central one. Right? We have to do our neuro exam all the way through and look at proprioception. If there are proprioceptive deficits, right, and hopefully you got And hopefully you guys know what proprioception, conscious proprioception is a term we use. It's not a reflex. It means that there has been sensory input recognized by the brain, which led to a response. So the most common, right? Test that we do is to see if patients will stand on the top of their feet, right? So we will take their paw. Stop sharing so you can see me. Right? So we take their paw and then we flip it over and the signal goes up to their brain. It says, you're standing on the wrong part of your foot and you flip it back. Okay, so that's ataxia for conscious proprioception and so is taking a pet and walking them up and down a curb, seeing if they can navigate, navigate a step. Things like that are all proprioception. So if they have proprioceptive deficits and head bobbing, head weaving or nystagmus, that patient probably has a central lesion, right? We're going to recommend a different workup for that case. So again, differentiating peripheral versus central vestibular disease. Head tilt with central, it's usually can be either ipsilateral, contralateral. With peripheral, it's almost always toward the lesion. Nystagmus, vertical with central, it can be horizontal or rotary with peripheral. Postural deficit reactions seen with central, normal with peripheral. No head signs, as we call them, right? So no additional cranial nerve deficits or alteration of consciousness when we have peripheral disease. But we can see those things if it's central. So upset, this was a really good little video too. Oh, is this one gonna work? All right. Well, that's not even vertical nystagmus. This is a dog with distemper, by the way. So what I want you to watch is this back foot. You have a clonic tonic tremor here, right? His foot is just trembling like a metronome and he's having what we call gum chewing seizures, right? So he's smacking his lips and chewing like he's got some gum in there. That dog has distemper. He's cerebellar problems, cerebellar problems. We're going to see abnormal gait where we see goose stepping. Or when they walk, their, their legs kind of float in the air a little bit like, you know, like some of the, some military, when they march, they do that. We may see what we call opisthotness and here's an example of opisthotness. Flexed hind limbs, extended front limbs, head thrown back. Sometimes that is also a sign of dysceribid activity, meaning, you know, severe head trauma. If they show opisthotness, that means we have injury to the brainstem, which is, which is pretty bad. If this works. Sorry, you guys. So disease of the cerebellum, what are we going to see? Posture and gait problems, right? So tremors, opisthotness, a head tilt, exaggerated to normal spinal reflexes. Loss of balance. So here, now this one worked in a different slide. It doesn't work in this one. Okay. So I am going to go over spinal cord lesions and then we'll go back to peripheral nerve stuff. Okay, so with spinal cord disorders, we have three main types, right? We can have a lesion outside of the dura mater, a lesion within the dura mater or one that is inside the spinal cord itself, right? So the extradural, intramedullary, intra-dural, extramedullary is that weird one. With spinal cord lesions, we see loss of function and weakness, right? Of limbs and varying degrees of pain. So when we have a lesion, can I get my little pen out here? So what I like to do is draw my stick figure. Right? C1 to C6. Right? That's cervical. And then we have our cervical intimescence here. And we have our thoraco-lumbar and our pelvic intimescence back here and then sacral. Okay? It's not, figure's not coming out as I would like, right? So C1 to C5, right? That's going to be the cervical cord. C6 to C2, that's going to be the intimescence, right? Where the radial brachial nerve, et cetera, come off of. Same thing back here, L4S1. So the way I remember it is L4, 5 for femoral, S for sciatic. That's where those nerves come from. That's, that's their origin in the cord between those vertebrae. So with cervical lesions, the number one symptom we see is pain. These patients are painful and they don't like to raise or lower their head that much. Rarely will we see tetraparesis. So the posture that this dachshund is exhibiting right here, his head is a little bit low. When he walks, he will not raise his head up. If you put food on a little box or something where he would have to kind of stand up on his back legs, he wouldn't be able to do it. Okay, so that's the, that's the common, most common symptom and presentation of a patient with a cervical problem. If that lesion is severe enough, it will cause tetraparesis and in doing so, usually we see some problem with breathing, right? Respiratory weakness or apnea. The cervical intimescence, right? Again, this is where the nerve roots come, then run the front legs. So we are not only going to see a patient who has neck pain, but they are not going to be able to use their front legs that well. And their back legs aren't going to be working that well either. Usually cervical lesions at C62 affect the back legs more so than the front legs, but they're going to have tetraparesis. When you check the reflexes of the back leg, they still work, right? Reflexes local. Thoraco-lumbar, thoraco-lumbar is the most common area that we see problems in small animal medicine when it comes to spinal cord issues. So the front legs will be normal, we'll have normal head signs, normal cranial nerves and we have issues with hind limb function, okay? So, and that varies from them having some weakness to being completely paralyzed. So here is a dachshund who has a thoraco-lumbar lesion, right? So right now, we are exhibiting conscious proprioception problems. You can see he's not completely paralyzed. He still has some motor, but he's very ataxic and weak with his back legs. Don't worry so much about Schiff-Sharrington. It's not as a big of a deal as people make it out to be anymore. But this is an example of Schiff-Sharrington. So this patient has no hind limb reflexes, they're flexed, front legs are extended out straight and they will not, he will only respond to, you know, a pinch up here. He has deep pain in the front legs, but they're so rigid. Because what happens with Schiff-Sharrington is loss of the interneuron modulation of the signal. So they become very spastic up front and weak to flaccid in the back end. That is considered a more severe spinal cord injury. However, again, if you get to them in enough time, they still have a, they, they have still a chance of recovery. Okay, lumbo-sacral, so L4 to S2, similar to the cervical intimescence. If we have a lesion here, we're going to have problems with hind limb reflexes, right? So loss of patellar reflex and loss of the withdrawal reflex. So if it's the patellar, that's femoral, that's going to be L4, 5. If they don't withdraw, that's, that's going to be all of them, but primarily it's going to be sciatic and pelvic limb. Okay, so S1 to S3, again, similar, so anything in that intimescence, we're going to have decreased withdrawal reflex, right? So we pinch a toe and they should flex their leg. So when you get this talk from Dr. Soto, please spend some time looking at this chart. Lesion location, what you see with the thoracic limbs, pelvic limbs, and if there's a severe lesion. Okay, because they're going to give you a little vignette that gives you a neuro exam and they're going to say, based on the exam, where is the lesion? That is what's going to happen. All right, so we have a few minutes here. Let me bring up my small animal exam. And we'll do some of those. Why this computer is being so stupid today? Okay. All right, here's a neural question. The prognosis for dogs with severe myasthenia gravis is poor, meaning 50% are gone after the first year. Which of the following complications is the reason for this poor outcome? Aspiration pneumonia, urinary tract infection, decubital skin ulcers or cerebral dysfunction? Right? So you first have to remember what myasthenia gravis is. Okay, you guys remember what that is? All right, put it in the chat, somebody, or come off mute. What is myasthenia gravis? So myasthenia gravis is an autoimmune disease, right? Where we have antibodies directed against the motor end plate. Right against the synapse there. So what is a common complication? Okay, I see aspiration pneumonia, good, right? So a common complication of myasthenia is development of mega sovagus. Okay, but this is one of those where with myasthenia, we do see decubital skin ulcers, right? Because they are having trouble getting up. If it's a big dog, right? Those skin ulcers can get infected and they can become septic. But far more often, we see aspiration pneumonia. All right, here's a good one. Here's another neural one. We have an 11-year-old male castrated, great, oh, sorry, one-year-old male castrated Great Dane. Okay, so remember, we're going to go to do some of our highlighting here. Right? So he's a one-year-old Great Dane. He's ataxic, all four limbs. Okay, pelvic limbs worse. Four limbs are stiff. Okay? So here's our neuro examination, normal cranial nerves, normal reflexes. Okay, do you guys remember during a neuro exam, what the scores mean? Okay, they expect you to know this.
All right, can you share your screen again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I was sharing. Here you go. So sorry, one-year-old Great Dane, spinal ataxia, all four legs, pelvic limbs worse, four limbs are stiff. So remember, on a neuro exam, they will say something like meniscus reflex and then there'll be a number next to it. It'll be negative, zero or positive. It'll be zero, sorry, zero or po, or zero or some other positive number, right? So zero means there's no reflex. Plus one means it's present but diminished. Plus two is normal and plus three is hyper. So the front legs, when they pinch a toe, he really throws his legs back. And it's a plus three withdrawal to the four limbs and to the high limbs. And when you do the patellar reflex, again, more pronounced than normal, right? It's a plus three. So he's hyper reflexic, all four limbs. Now you check his gait, right? You help him up and see how he walks. He's got a wide-based stance. And he stumbles. He has intact proprioception, but his prolonged all four legs. Deep pain is present. And he has some neck pain when you flex his neck. So where is the lesion? C1, C5, C6, T2, T3, L3 or L4, S1?
B, C6 to T2.
I've got one C6, T2. Anybody else? Okay, so he's a, so what does that mean, a wobbler? That's not one of the, that's not one of the choices. Where's the lesion? Oh, A, sorry, I see A, yes, correct. So it's not C6 to T2 because there are reflexes present. If there was a lesion in C6 to C, to T2, he would be zero or plus one with the reflexes, right? So lesions of where those nerves come out, working the legs, right? Whether it's the front legs or the back leg, if there's a lesion there, your reflexes are going to be diminished to those limbs. Ooh, another neural one. Okay. So is everybody good with the location of? So is everybody good with the location of the Great Dane? Everybody good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Next one. So we have a 13-year-old Samoyed. owner believes the dog had a stroke. Dog is falling over and has its head tilted to the side, it looks like. So her dog is, you know, obviously, it's a good client, she does everything for it. You do a neuro exam, okay, so mentation, quiet, alert, responsive. We have spontaneous horizontal nystagmus. Fast phase toward the right with a left head tilt and left-sided torticolis. Reflexes normal, gait, falling toward the left, proprioception normal. Okay, where is the lesion? So A, tumor of the medulla oblongata, right, a brainstem tumor. Is it idiopathic peripheral vestibular disease? A problem with the vestibular nucleus, right, infarction, right, loss of blood flow with stroke to the nucleus? Or do we have a problem with the cerebellum?
B, idiopathic peripheral
I have B, yes, idiopathic, right? So what, so what ear would you be looking for, right? Where would you, if somebody said, all right, you think this is idiopathic? Could be an ear problem. What ear are you going to examine first? What, what, what ear do you think is the bad ear?
The left one.
The left one, yes. So remember, with nystagmus, we have two phases, a slow phase and a fast phase. With peripheral vestibular disorders affecting one side or the other, the fast phase of the nystagmus is usually toward the normal side, the side without the lesion. Okay, the reason being is the side that has the lesion, again, similar to what I was talking about, those interneurons, it loses its inhibitory function and goes, starts going, that somaluminal canal and stuff is going crazy. And so that's why you have a fast phase of, away from the lesion, away from the lesion. All right. Ah, here we go. Let's do a, let's do a, let's do a parasite one. So you got a coughing puppy with soft stools and it's got abnormal lung sounds. Thoracic radiographs are normal. You get a stool sample and you see this under the microscope. Okay, name the bug, name the parasite. Acapulmaria toxicaera, Paragonimus, or Arulus stronjulus. Okay, Sophia says A. Everybody agree? Okay, so that is Acapulmaria. Remember Acapulmaria have a operculum. Which, and it's got this ob, you know, this basically oval shape. Toxicaera is more round. And honestly, I don't remember what these two guys look like. All right, let's see if you guys remember some anesthesia. Here's a capnograph, right, a capnograph. We have these different phases of CO2, right? This is time on the x-axis. Millim- millimeters of mercury of CO2 on the y-axis. So as we exhale, right, we start to build up CO2, we get to this point, and then from D to E, that's inhalation. So it is asking you about point D. What is point D referred to on your capnometer?
End title CO2?
So D is the end title CO2 that your machine gives you a number for. Okay, so that's going to be the highest concentration of CO2 that can be measured by your capnograph. Oh, another neural one. All right, we have a four-month-old hound dog. Stazing and coughing. He's got nasal discharge. He got his first set of vaccines a week ago at, by a, who knows, a quote-unquote vaccine clinic. For the past two days. Aggressive ataxia and tremors. You suspect distemper. Which of the following is the best to confirm your suspicion of distemper? So we have virus isolation, CSF antibody, PCR test of the blood, or ELISA of the blood? Is the best way to diagnose distemper? Right? This is a hard question. Because he was vaccinated a week ago. What kind of vaccine is the distemper vaccine? Is it a live modified vaccine or a killed virus? Does remember?
It's modified live.
It's a modified live. And what do you know about viral testing and modified live viruses?
It can go as a false positive then.
Yeah, exactly. So had he not been vaccinated, I would say we can just do a PCR test, a respiratory PCR test. But since he was vaccinated, we can get a false positive because he was vaccinated within that first week. What do you guys think now?
ELISA?
The problem with an ELISA is, right, the ELISA looks for antibodies. So if he was naturally infected or became vaccinated, he could develop antibodies within that first week. And we don't know if it's to the vaccine or to the natural infection, right? That's why for rabies testing, you know, you if you suspect the pet has rabies, you can't send off, you know, rabies titers. Because maybe he was vaccinated back in the day and he has antibodies against it. But maybe he hasn't been vaccinated in the last 10 years and now he truly has rabies. So I see, um, virus isolation, um, that is that's a
So C
That sounds good, but it doesn't really exist for distemper. Um, so the recommendation is to get a sample of the CSF and look for the CSF antibody. The reason being is with vaccination, you have a blood-brain barrier that's intact. And you should not find antibodies against distemper in a normal patient in their spinal fluid because of the blood-brain barrier. With distemper, we have breakdown of that barrier, and then we have these antibodies crossing into it. So that would be the recommendation, or that would be, that's the best answer here. In real life, it would be, you would do, um, DNA testing or PCR on the CSF for distemper and, um, uh, other infectious diseases like neospor- neospora and things like that that look like distemper. Okay, let's do a couple more here. Do you guys want to stay on? We're at, we're at the hour. Do you guys want to keep going for a little bit? Or if not, that's cool, too.
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right, we'll keep going for a little bit here. All right, the most common cause of fungal rhinitis in cats is Blasto Aspergillus histoplasma or Cryptococcus neiformans. Yes, it is D, it's Cryptococcus. This is one of those where just kind of like rote memorization, right? When they talked about fungal disease and they talked about cats, we see crypto in their nose and they get all kinds of deformations of their face and chronic nasal discharge and so on and so forth. Okay, which of the, all right, we're not going to do this one because it's a poorly worded question. All right, that one's too easy. Oh, here's one with an X-ray. Let's look at this one. Let me let me change the view so you can see the whole thing here. Okay, hopefully you guys can still read it, okay? So we have a six-year-old male castrate, domestic short hair. Coughing and retching. So he's got BVs and a respiratory rate of 50. The remainder of the exam is normal. You do some radiographs. So let me blow this up a little bit so you can see this X-ray a little bit better. So here's the lateral. It's a right lateral. I know there's no R marker here. Of the thorax, and here is the VD of the thorax. Let me know if you need me to go back to the lateral. If you want another look at that. Give you guys a couple of minutes here. Back to the lateral. Oh, there's the right. I didn't see it up there. Okay, what type of pulmonary infiltrate is present in the coughing cat? Right, we have five lung patterns, right, interstitial vascular, bronchial, alveolar, and then mixed. Right, so which one do you guys think this is? Interstitial, bronchial, alveolar, vascular, or interstitial? Coughing kitty. Bronchial pattern, yes, that is correct. So what you're looking for are these bronchi that we see. They call tram tracks. And then here, where I like to look on a chest X-ray, I'm going to zoom this in a little bit more here. So when you look at a lateral thoracic radiograph, look at the triangle that is formed between the caudal border of the heart, the cranial creuse of the diaphragm, and ventral to the vena cava. This triangle right here should be black. The only white in it you should see are ribs. If you see little wispy lines inside this triangle, interstitial pattern. If you see circles in here, we've got a couple of circles here, some down here, right, we have donuts, that's bronchial. If you see air bronchograms or little black trees with white behind them, that's alveolar. Right? So look at this little triangle. Because looking at this area up here, the hyalur area, there's a lot of stuff going on back there. Okay, you have great vessels going back here, you've got the esophagus up here. You've got the main stem bronchi, it's busy up in here. Okay. Let's where are we here? Okay. So we said the coughing cat, it was bronchial. Which of the following would be your top two differentials for the coughing cat? So again, poorly worded question. So heart failure and lung lobe torsion, pleural effusion, heartworm disease, bronchitis and heartworm disease, neoplasia and aspiration pneumonia. Okay, which combo there or two differentials would give you a bronchial infiltrate? So that is bronchitis and heartworm disease, yes, right? So bronchitis or feeling asthma, looks like that, barrel chest, overly inflated lungs, tram tracks and donuts. And then heartworm disease looks exactly like that in a cat. Remember, heartworm disease in a cat is a pulmonary problem. It is not a vascular problem like it is in the dog. Right, which of the following pathogens has been implicated in causing canine infectious tracheobronchitis? Okay, which bug causes kennel cough? Brucella, Mycobacterium tuberculosis, respiratory syncytial virus, or parainfluenza virus?
D.
It is D, parainfluenza virus. Okay, here's one about cats, okay? Cats with chronic upper respiratory infection. It's believed to be due to which of the following organisms? Herpes, chlamydia porinata, or staph? Which of those three is most likely to cause chronic upper respiratory in a cat?
A.
Right? Herpes, herpes is like, uh, you know, luggage, you know, it never, you never get rid of it, it never goes away. Alrighty, what drug is used to treat cases of non-cardiac disease which result in pulmonary hypertension? So chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, right, COPD, bronchiectasis, chronic asthma can lead to pulmonary hypertension because of scarring in the lung and over, and, and basically development of over circulation. So what drug do we use to treat pulmonary hypertension? Ferosamide, Tributiline, sildenafil, or Theophylline? Okay, so the answer is sildenafil, sildenafil or what they use in human medicine, Viagra, was initially developed as a drug for pulmonary hypertension. It happened to have a side effect that made Pfizer way more money than treating people who were having trouble breathing. But basically, it is an, it is a selective pulmonary vessel dilator. So sildenafil is used for patients with pulmonary hypertension with and without heart disease, to be honest with you. So they, they, you know, there's a lot of, uh, um, a lot of dogs with like mitral valve disease who develop pulmonary hypertension and we put them on sildenafil in addition to their pimobendin and ACE inhibitor and so on and so forth. All right, well, that was the small animal one. I will be in touch with, uh, Dr. Soto to add another session so we can do some more, um, multiple choice questions. This is supposed to be the last, the last session, but, um, uh, I didn't have really good attendance the first two, so we'll, we'll try and add another one here before you guys have the exam. I think it's coming up in April. So we'll try and, we'll try and get another one this month. All right, have a great Friday, you guys.
Thank you.
Take care. Take care.